I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we please have the roll call?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Polito here. Councilmember Hawkins, Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Whitmer.
Yes.
Mayor DeGolia.
I'm here. Are there any public comments? I don't see any public comments in the room, and I don't see any public comments online. Uh, the next item is departmental written reports. I assume that's the city manager's.
It is. I renamed it, uh, to be more, uh, collaborative and team involved, uh, but it is, uh, updates from all the various different departments. Again, it's in that, uh, for the second time, it's in that different format where it's a digital item. It's a little more polished, has a lot more information in it, and it's available via the town's website and the archive as well. But staff is here to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay, any questions? I don't see any questions. Uh, next is the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to pull anything off of the consent calendar?
And could you itemize the consent calendars, items number one through five?
Correct.
In the agenda?
That's correct.
I'll, um, make a motion to approve the consent to calendar.
Second.
And I'm seeing no comments on the chat. That's good.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's approved. Uh, we will move on to item number six, which is a public hearing to introduce an ordinance to amend title fifteen of the Atherton Municipal Code.
Speaking of this one.
The fire department.
Cause Ron's gonna be about fifteen minutes late. Oh, we're moving pretty quick.
Who's gonna take it?
Is that your introduction, Mike?
Yeah, yes, Mike.
Yeah, it's like you said, this public hearing is to introduce the first reading of the building code adoption ordinance by amending title fifteen of the Town of Atherton Municipal Code, adopting by reference the two thousand twenty-two California Building Standards Code and ratify the fire regulations as adopted by Mellow Park Fire District. The upcoming adoption of the two thousand twenty-two California Building Codes was briefly discussed at our last roundtable meeting on October third. There was no concerns, um, and we went over some of the code changes, um, within, at that meeting. And then, um, myself and I have the Fire Marshal John Johnson with Mellow Park Fire Protection District with me, so we can answer any questions you might have.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, is there any questions from members of the council? Okay.
Uh, my question is, um, um, Mike and, uh, Ron is.
John.
John, sorry. Um, are these also being adopted in your other districts such as Mellow Park and East Palo Alto?
Ordinance, yes.
Yes.
It went through Palo Alto yesterday, Mellow Park, and so it's Samhail County.
Okay, so Mellow Park has adopted them?
They're in process. They're, they're behind, uh, due in terms of dates. They're, I believe, November first.
Okay. And East Palo Alto had no changes?
Yeah, no changes.
Do you expect changes from Mellow Park?
Uh, the only item Mellow Park has, uh, which has been consistent was they delete the standards and guidelines manual, uh, which is at the very beginning of the ordinance. They, they have had the belief that it impacts their roads. However, the fire code is very clear that it's only for private roads, and it does not impact city streets, but that was, that's been an item that they, that's just a practice.
Are they trying just to clarify the language?
That was just their choice from their legal counsel from several years, so. They've just maintained that practice.
Okay.
This is the fire code in the whole. That our standards and guidelines manual just kind of helps for us to help with traffic calming devices, how to design it, so our fire engines can get through.
Understand.
All right, so, um, Atherton does have a few private roads, uh, one being Odell, and there's a number of others. Uh, so, I don't know.
And would that affect?
In that instance, like private road for me, where I'm gonna, uh, work with that would be like the college, et cetera, so if they're gonna, uh, it's really for commercial properties that, that I would deal with, how any traffic calming devices, turning radiuses. Uh, you know, when I deal with like Facebook and their problems, it's, it's not really dealing with single-family homes. I mean, I have my, my rules for that, but that's really what the intent is, is for large developments that I gotta deal with.
I see.
Did I read it right, that there, that you're requiring that houses have lit numbers on them, and does that mean you're lighting on it or like a light box?
It, it can be either way, but that's been in the ordinance now, I'm gonna say nine years at least, where they're lit. And, uh, then I know for the Town of Atherton, I think there, you have your own lighting rules, so it just follows the Town of Atherton's lighting.
Is that for existing homes? Do we have to go back and retrofit all new homes?
Anybody that pulls up.
You know what, if I could, I'm sorry, just so that the people that are participating remotely, and you might just need to click it on.
Uh, I have a question. Of these changes, what, what, from your perspective, is the most significant change?
Uh, the most significant changes that I see are actually commercially related, uh, so that would be, um, emergency responder radio coverage, which, uh, requires commercial buildings to put in, uh, the responder radio coverage for all emergency aspects, and it needs to follow the Samhail County Fire Chief's policy, because we're trying to make sure that we have consistency and quality within the county. And then the other would be a fire control room, which is following, again, a standard that we're trying to get within the county for operations, and that's for large buildings, which again, here would impact if any large buildings got built on the colleges or something like that.
So, so those, uh, those rules and regulations that apply to commercial entities that in Atherton, would that be limited to the schools and maybe the town?
For, for private schools, yeah, any commercial building, private schools, those rules would apply, correct?
It applied to town hall. Pardon? It applied to town hall, too.
Correct. Yeah, which, that was the current code, but for the new code, now we're just making sure that it complies with Samhail County fire policies.
Okay, what about public schools?
Public schools, uh, the state has their own, own rules for that, so I cannot apply any of my ordinances on public schools.
Are you working with them to get something approved?
Uh, that's the state fire marshal. I have no jurisdiction on that. They have their own inspectors, uh, and everything, so we do work with them on access and water. That is the only two things that I have jurisdiction on, and we do work with the schools on that to ensure that we have access and have the firewater available.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay, and is there any public comment on this? I don't see any public comment in the room. I don't see any public comment online. Uh, comments from members of the council?
Answering my questions.
Uh, can I get a, uh, let me just be clear, the public hearing is now open, and I don't see any public comments or any comments at the moment from members of the council. This is an action item. So.
Mayor DeGolia, can I, can I make one comment, actually? Um, I, I do think that the council should strike a few sections in the ordinance, um, and I apologize, I didn't catch this sooner. Um, but we should strike the sections that are attempting to adopt the building code and, um, the green building code. The next item addresses this and adopts it with modifications. So it's duplicative, but it also doesn't entail all of the necessary modifications. Can you highlight what, um, page or section? Yes, section eight, page five. Fifteen point nineteen point zero one zero is one example. And so we've got the the energy code, section seven. So the, the next item is going to, the next item before you is going to adopt and amend, um, the California Green Building Code. Um, it's also going to adopt, uh, some exceptions to it, so my recommendation is to not duplicate efforts and to delete. Um, on page five, under section eight, where it says chapter fifteen point nineteen point zero one zero, adoption of the California Green, I would strike that out.
The entirety of section eight?
Correct.
What about section nine on the historical building code?
Or section eleven?
Or section, yeah.
I didn't know that we could do that, you know, cherry pick it like that.
Looking at the ordinance.
Yeah.
One, one second. So. Talking about the electrical code, or the initiative codes, are these all, these are all chapter fifteen?
Oh, okay.
So all. Looking back, uh, Madam City Attorney, is it just section one?
My recommendation, right, my recommendation is that we, um, delete section eight on page five that attempts to adopt or amend chapter fifteen point nineteen point zero one zero. That is redundant of the item that you're going to hear next, and I recommend you adopt the next item because it carves out certain exceptions. Okay. So if you wish to do so, you can make a motion that you introduce by title only the ordinance striking out section eight.
Right, so it's just the, the green building code that she's concerned about, because it's duplicated with the next section.
The reach codes, right.
That makes sense. Do you agree with that, City Manager?
Yeah, the reach code, not a green, green code.
Or the green building.
I think it, it, uh, the reach code amends the green building.
Right. And that's the next item, so that's the only section that has to be removed, section eight.
All right.
So moved.
Second.
Well, I, I'd like to ask, you know, if we've, if we feel with our, some of our historical buildings in town, or as we designate them, they might have special carve-outs, and I would think that we would, um, might consider that a little further.
Of the California Green Code?
No, he's talking about the historical.
It's fire code. He's asking if other things should be deleted.
The history.
Yeah. The fire code. What sticks out to me is that historical building code, so we do have some, for example, that have very narrow driveways and very long trackings. We have, you know, we have some that may have some unique aspect to them that you can't change, or would change the historical nature of the house.
I don't think anything is different with the current fire code with respect to historical buildings than has been in the past. Is that correct?
So for the historical building code, yeah, the, the fire district does not, uh, unfortunately, the state fire marshal does not accept that section. We do have a amendment piece that just says that if anything is done to a historic building, then the fire protection shall follow what's in a historical building code. That's the only piece that we have in regards to historical building, so.
Other than that, it hasn't changed.
However, when it's an historical building, they have to put it back the way it was, not bring it up to code per se. So I realize some of the equipment in that may be changed, but, but, you know, historical buildings, you have to bring in special craftsmen to, to repair whatever needs to be repaired or restore whatever needs to be restored, and they're gonna restore it as the way it was done in the period that it was built.
Correct.
Not at the current level.
Correct, and the historical building code dictates certain fire, life safety, fire protection measures, and so that is the only thing it said, and we're just saying to follow the life safety measure that the historical building code dictates and not do all the modern fire protection measures.
Vice Mayor, I think you're saying the same thing you are.
Okay.
Okay, I think it's okay.
And we, and we don't get into the pieces.
Mona, you were saying something?
Um, I might be able to provide a little bit of an explanation, so periodically, all of the uniform codes in the state are updated. That includes building, plumbing, fire, green building, and so forth, and the ones that have been adopted by reference in the Atherton Municipal Code are up until two thousand and nineteen. Those have all been updated as of two thousand and twenty-two. I believe they go into effect January one, two thousand and twenty-three. So the purpose of this ordinance is just to ensure that in adopting by, um, reference, those uniform codes that we have, the most recent ones adopted, so that's the purpose behind the items, um, it, it, the, um, historical, um, building code and other codes that are before you. So in other words, if you were to look at the Atherton Municipal Code and you looked at these sections, it would be verbatim the same language. The, the year, though, would just say twenty nineteen California Historical Building Code or twenty nineteen California Green Building Code. All of the other language is the same.
Thanks.
There's a motion in a second.
Okay, um, I have a motion in a second to approve this item with the exception of, uh, section eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If that's unanimous.
Second reading and adoption will be next month.
Yeah.
Second. We'll move on to item number seven, which was to conduct a public hearing and waive the first reading introduced by title only ordinance two thousand and twenty-two, amending chapter fifteen nineteen of the Atherton Municipal Code, adopting the California Green Building Code and EV charging with the reach codes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So I'm gonna just repeat what you said again. The republic hearing is to waive the first reading and introduce by title only and to amend chapter fifteen nineteen of the Atherton Municipal Code by adopting the two thousand twenty-two California Green Building Code and EV charging and all electric reach codes with exceptions. Um, we, this reach code was brought up at our last October the third development roundtable meeting. No questions or concerns were raised. I was really surprised on that, even talking to some of the builders throughout maybe the last year, none of them really have a lot of concerns about it. You know, I think they like the exceptions that are being proposed, um, but that could change once construction starts and they actually have to start doing it, so. And then, um, I have, uh, Rod with TRC with me, and Rafael Reyes, he's on Zoom. He should be on there somewhere. And we're to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Questions from members of the council?
No comments.
I don't see any questions. Is there any public comments on this? Uh, okay, I have a public comment from Stacy on, and.
Here's one here.
I.
Oh, sorry.
I recognized the one online first, and then I'd see Matt has one. Okay, go ahead, Stacy.
Yeah, so I'm speaking on behalf or as a representative of Atherton's Environmental Programs Committee, and we urge you to adopt this reach code ordinance. It's basically what we talked about in the last couple meetings, and it's also consistent with, um, the rest of our neighbors. So I'm gonna read really quickly the list of all the other towns in our area that have adopted a similar or more strict reach code to give you guys an idea. Belmont, Brisbane, Burlingame, Campbell, Cupertino, Daly City, East Palo Alto, Half Moon Bay, Hillsborough, Los Altos, Los Altos Hills, Los Gatos, Mellow Park, Millbrae, Milpitas, Morgan Hill, Mountain View, Pacifica, Palo Alto, Redwood City, Saratoga, San Carlos, San Jose, the City of San Mateo, the City of San Cl- Santa Clara, South San Francisco, Sunnyvale, plus both the counties of San Mateo and Santa Clara. So this is, would be consistent with our neighbors, and it would, so all of the developers and contractors, as we've heard, would not have any trouble with this. It's also necessary for our town to adopt this reach code in order for us to hit our two thousand and thirty emissions reduction targets. Currently, per our sustainability, uh, coordinator, natural gas appliances account for forty-five point nine of our emissions, and for us to hit our two thousand and thirty goal of reducing our emissions by forty-nine percent below two thousand and five levels, we need to reduce the amount of gas appliances in town, and this is the, the way that produces the least amount of friction, especially given that we are expecting a lot of ADU construction in the coming years. So, thank you.
May I ask a question? Yes.
Are you saying that lo- long list of, uh, municipalities adopted an all-electric reach code with no exceptions? Because I don't believe that.
No, they all have reach codes that are as strict as ours or stricter. So some towns are stricter than Atherton, but we would not be the strictest.
Yeah, Berkeley will be the strictest. That, that's normal.
And Palo Alto is getting pretty close, right, Stacy?
Yeah, and San Mateo just adopted a, a very strict one, um, as well, so.
Any other questions?
No comments.
I'm a little vague. Go ahead.
I'm a little vague on, on what we agreed to, uh, in February, and that's probably because we dealt with this topic about ten o'clock at night. Um, did, did we have ex- ex- exceptions for hot water and pool heaters? No.
Oh, the exceptions that the council authorized, I'm sorry, uh, were, uh, for fireplaces and cooking appliances.
Were what?
Fireplaces and cooking appliances.
Do you have a gas fireplace and a gas cooking stove?
Correct, and I think there needs to be some, there was an early question about clarity around whether that cooking facility in that fireplace was indoor only or outdoor or how that worked, and maybe the building official can address that.
Yeah, I think the intention, the intent is to have the gas cooking appliances and the fireplaces, your fire pits, um, for indoor and outdoor use on the, on the residence for the exception.
Yeah, because most people's, uh, built-in barbecues or.
Right.
Gas.
So I mean, and I, I, it's not worded like that, but I can definitely change indoor and outdoor to clarify.
That would be.
To clarify that.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, so I've got a couple questions. Um, just to clarify what you just said, the exceptions would be for the cooking stove, i- is that right? Not the oven, but the stove?
No, it's all.
It would be your, it'd have to be both, it'd be your.
It could be both.
Yeah, cooking appliance.
Okay, so it could be y- your cooktop plus your oven.
Yeah.
Uh, it could be an outdoor barbecue or perhaps an outdoor cooktop as well.
Yeah.
Um, uh, okay, and with respect to the recommendations for electric vehicle charging, uh, for office or in our case, schools, and, uh, and I assume it applies to the town. Twenty percent of the parking places would be EV ready, is that correct? Either level one or level two. I, I can't see, it says level two EVCS. I'm not sure what EVCS means. And thirty percent level two EV capable, so.
Maybe so.
Uh, uh, how does that work? Twenty percent of the parking places, level two EVCS, does that mean twenty percent of the parking places are EVCS and thirty percent are level two EV capable or thirty percent of the twenty percent?
Evening, Council. My name is Farhad Farman with TRC here on behalf of Peninsula Clean Energy.
You gotta speak, and we can't.
Sorry about that. Farhad Farman with TRC here on behalf of Peninsula Clean Energy. Um, they are additive percentages, so it'd be a total of fifty percent of the parking spaces, and EVCS stands for EV charging station, so the charging cable is provided on site, much like in the parking lot here.
So, uh, then I need to understand what we're saying. So it says twenty percent of the parking spaces level two EVCS. What does EVCS mean?
Charging station.
Electric vehicle charging station. The cable is provided.
So, so there would be twenty percent, th- these are actual charging stations?
Correct.
Not just capable of.
Correct.
Okay, and an additional thirty percent would be level two EV capable, is that correct?
That's correct, so that's the conduit and panel capacity, but there's no plug or, or place to plug into.
Okay. Do we have that in the town center, or does the town center not comply with this?
The town center has EV charging stations, but we do not have any, I'm assuming, electrical outlet stations in our parking lot beyond that.
Do we have this percentage?
No.
No.
So, we're gonna pass something that we're not in compliance with?
It wasn't, uh, part of our code in two thousand and sixteen.
Oh, so we don't have to comply? This is going forward?
Correct.
So, I have a question.
Yeah.
So, um, I built a few houses in San Jose over, over the years, and, uh, they recently passed all-electric. And so the last home we built that would normally have had a four hundred amp electrical service, we had trouble getting by with twelve hundred amps. And, um, and we didn't have to have, we had one EV charging station, so I'm curious, what's this gonna do to the, to the main panel of these houses? Are there gonna be two thousand amp services?
So for the single-family homes scenario, um, the National Electrical Code or the California Electrical Code doesn't actually require adding these together to get to that full service that you, you would have in a reserved breaker spot. Um, in short, each one of these charging stations adds about forty amps. Um, I believe the proposal is a level two EV ready, um, for one space and a level one EV ready for the second space.
Yeah.
So that's a forty amp plus, um, at two forty volts, plus twenty, uh, uh, twenty amps at one hundred and twenty volts. So, not really close to the twelve hundred amps, uh, scenario.
No, I know, but, but this all-electric thing i- is getting crazy. The, the, these hot water heaters alone can draw eighty amps.
The, a typical sixty-five gallon or eighty gallon water heater would draw two hundred and forty volts at forty amps. Um, you could choose to have multiple of those throughout a larger home, um, to reduce the wait time at the hot water tap, um, in which case, yes, those would be additive. Uh, the space conditioning appliances are again about thirty amps at two forty volts, and it's a, basically a typical air conditioner draw, and you may also choose to have multiple of those throughout the home. But for the space heating, um, it's not an additive load, it's the same as the air conditioner.
I, I, I wanna pursue my questioning on the EV spaces because it says non-residential office and non-residential non-office. What is what in Atherton? We, we, we don't have any real office space. We have schools and we have the town. So what are we? Are we, are we non-residential office or are we non-residential non-office in this town?
Go ahead.
I believe the intent is the school's not office.
So what is office?
It'd be, uh, occupancy class B, um, a place of business.
In Atherton, what is non-residential office?
That's.
We don't have.
And, and if we don't have it, why do we have it in the proposal?
Do we have any of those in Atherton?
Non-res, your school, our, our schools and the circus club are all non-residential.
Are they office or non?
It'd be non-office, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be office, it'd be non-office.
Correct. Yeah, not office. So should we take out the non-residential office?
So I can strike? Get rid of that.
So that the town.
The non-residential office.
Okay, so, so rather than what we just spent
No.
five minutes talking about, we're now talking about.
If we're talking town hall, then yeah, it would, hold on. So no, if, if we include the town hall, then it would be office.
A lot of offices at the town hall.
So the.
All library.
Those would be all.
Yeah, but they've already been built.
They're grandfathered in.
Why is the library an office if the school isn't? I don't understand that. There's libraries in the schools.
Yeah, the library shouldn't be an office. So how does that, where are gonna the code?
Well, li- library isn't not an office. It's a, I'm not sure the exact classification. You, you know, I know it's not, it's not an office.
It's a what?
It's an educational institution.
That it could be an E, it could be an A, you know, because they do assemble, you get so many people, so but it is not an office. We would not consider the library an office.
So where where are these categories coming from? Are they coming from the building code or are they our categories to create?
What far as?
As far as non residential, non office, are they based?
This is what actually what reach code. That was proposed through the reach codes.
Right.
The reach code recommends that office spaces. Be have have higher penetrations of EV charging because of longer dwell times, people are parked there throughout the middle of the day. And they can charge their vehicle for longer, and these are using the occupancy classes that are already in the building code. If there are not anticipated anticipated to be many new construction offices in Atherton. You know, over the next three years, you could consider this innocuous code provision. In but you know, if you're, if there's some uncertainty around that, daytime EV charging is pretty. Carbon free because of our solar energy, so if you if you might have office spaces built, it may be good to keep this provision rather than remove it.
Well, I it it's a criteria is people are there all day long, then. People are at the schools most of the day. So we need to, if we're gonna approve something, we need to know if it's going to apply. I think to have fifty percent of all the parking spaces have EV charging. Or be EV charging capable is fairly.
Ridiculous.
Extensive, I mean, we and in the Atherton Town Center, I'm. I'm aware we have like four or six charging stations, I'm not exactly sure.
Four planned for six, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have something like ninety parking spaces.
And and we've reduced the number of parking places that were here when we built the new town center. So giving fifty percent of away is, you know, is ludicrous.
How however, if we were to build the solar carports over the Caltrain parking spaces. We may install additional EV charging stations within those, totally fed by that.
Well, if if what we're doing is passing a provision that says. When more than ten parking spaces are constructed, ten percent of them will be EV. Uh, charging stations and ten percent will be EV capable, that's twenty percent of the total. If you had a hundred charging stations, that'd be twenty different. Either ten, ten EV charging stations and then ten EV capable, that's more than we have right now here, so. But that's, I think relatively close to what we have is my guess, but having fifty percent of them is. It's in the middle of the page, on page two, under non residential, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what the proposal is.
But it's moot because we don't have any offices.
Right, so we can. Propose to take out the whole reference to non residential office.
Right.
Okay, I guess that's all the questions I have.
I want to take.
Yeah, you have comments?
Uh, well, I've got both, so my questions are.
Wouldn't it apply here?
Yeah. But we're not having anything do here.
Okay.
So my questions are. First off, I I thank you for putting in an outdoor barbecue stations. Because I know we talked about that and everybody was in agreement on it, so I don't know how it fell out. So calling that something that you said it would be a cooktop, that's great. Outdoor fire rings, we did talk a little bit about those. The alternative, there's people that would would burn wood, which is even worse in the summertime, for example. So I believe that they should be included in there, and I know we talked about those as well. Also, I I didn't see, you know, the pool heaters. You know, until we understand what the 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 electrical cost trade off is gonna be, because I haven't seen that. You know, we we did talk about leaving pool heaters as they are. The other question I have is when somebody already has an existing house. And they're then doing some remodeling. But they're not gonna remodel, say example, the where the heater is, or they need to do a replacement because the heater went out. Or the water heater went out, they should be able to replace like for like as opposed to do an upgrade. It's silent on this, so I don't understand, you know, we we need to make this thing very, very clear. So that people understand what they have to do and what they don't have to do.
The.
No way. Questions, so he's a.
Requirements here do not apply to remodels.
Addition, remodels, alterations.
They're all exempt.
Repairs.
Okay. What about the pool?
That's that's direction from council, they want to include pool heaters.
I know we talked about it.
Where was left is that we will give research back to us about availability of electric heaters.
Yeah, and what their efficiency is, and then the fire rings.
Are they part of the efficiency studies are in the back because they cover just about everything.
Yes, so they're not part of the cost effectiveness studies if that's what you're referring to, council member. However, there is a utility sponsored cost effectiveness study for those in progress. In addition, Peninsula Clean Energy has commissioned a design guide for pool heat pump pool heaters. They're very high efficiency, operate three hundred to four hundred percent efficiency. They're typically higher amperage, so they're sixty to eighty amps, so they can take a good amount of panel space. They are also larger footprints and they do emit a noise. However, there are multiple local contractors that provide warranties on labor and materials for these equipments. And if you utilize it with a pool cover, you will likely be able to maintain temperature over the winter. Gets gets a little close, but it's gonna stay pretty close to warm at that temperature.
But but since we had talked about it and we said until there's more proof on it. That we wouldn't include them at this time, however, we could, we can always amend things and we can, we could amend this. Later when there's more definitive information.
Yeah, we just need counsel.
And and cost evaluation.
So if I could just make a comment about that, I know that when I built my pool, it was first put in as gas. And then we transitioned it to electric for our spa. And it works really, really well, it's much more efficient, it's faster. And it costs less money, and it wasn't a huge expense to transition it out, so that's just my personal experience. For what that's worth, and that was like twenty, no, how many years ago? It seems like forever now. Yes.
Have a question.
Yeah.
I also have a comment, I just, the comment I want to say.
Oh wait, before we get start giving comments, let's see if there's public.
Yeah, so.
There you never got to talk before.
Well, okay, so what we didn't finish my my other question, fire rings.
Yeah, we, I mean, I look at as being the fire ring or fire pit like an outdoor fireplace.
Yeah.
But like I said, if I have, I can change the wording, I can add those, be specific on that, I don't have a problem doing that.
Well, when I when I met with the city manager, you know, he and I, I I believe we agreed, maybe we didn't, but. I thought we had agreed that there needs to be more definitive delineation in this in this document.
Well, that's probably my fault, I could have been more specific.
I think on all these things, we need to be more specific.
My understanding from what you've said, Mike, is that the first bullet point. Under the, where there's the three bullet points would be residential buildings. May contain non electric cooking appliances, barbecues, fireplaces and fire pits. And the interpretation of cooking appliances applies both indoors and outdoors. But it doesn't apply to ADUs guesthouses or pool houses. And we still need to discuss the issue of. Of pool heaters that hasn't been agreed to.
Right.
So you're looking at the staff report?
I'm looking at the staff.
Right, and so maybe there's more detail in the actual ordinance.
Well, I looked at the actual.
They're pretty.
I'm assuming that whatever we agree to will be put into the order.
That's correct.
Yeah, we just need to be clear.
So I've got some public comment, I first want, so I want to just make sure we're done with questions. Okay, go ahead.
One of the, when we did the carve out for the gas stoves. We were reluctant, but we realized that our citizens want that. So one of the things that we talked about putting in, I believe it's in there, but I want to make sure it's clear. Is that if someone opts to build a new house and put a gas stove in it, then they are also required to put the electrical. The backing for that to later be replaced because we believe that that this infrastructure is gonna be in there for a long time. So we want to make sure that we're set up for that, that's in there and called out, right?
Well, and pretty much all gas appliances now, correct me if I'm wrong, the twenty twenty two. Energy code is requiring receptacles at all gas appliances now. That's just, that's coming out.
So it'd be plum that you could.
It's gonna be, yeah, it's, it's in the code, in the new code.
Including replacements? If you have an existing built house and you need to replace your cooktop. When you put the new cooktop up and hook it up, do you need to then run the line there?
No.
No, it'll already be there.
Okay. If if you have a gas cooktop and you and you're gonna replace it with a gas cooktop. Do you have to put in the electrical connection so that it could be replaced?
Not on, not on an addition remodeler, it's existing.
All right, okay, thank you, I just wanted to be clear about it.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so I've got, are there any other questions?
I I don't have a question.
Okay, then let's take, I've got four public comments, I've got Matt Chen, and I've got Walt Robinson, Mike Child, and then Stacy Holland.
Okay, thank you, mayor. My public comment actually directs a lot to Mike regarding the outdoor indoor distinction. We have applying application in there and not to mention another permutation of an outdoor fireplace, we're looking at a fire table. So, you know, I just wanted to comment that. And that comment is sort of related to something that I wanted to address regarding an earlier public comment. It was my understanding that Hillsborough, a town that looks at us and sometimes we look at them, actually has an all electric preferred option. Which actually gives more flexibility from my interpretation than what we're doing, but it also avoids having to legislate every. Exception that you can imagine that someone might use gas in the house. It might be a bridge we've already passed, but I'm just commenting that, you know, that that this, the the exception approach. Does lead to kind of discussion we're having. But I'm primarily here for the outdoor indoor as well as the fire table is added to another permutation of fireplace.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Walt Robinson. Uh, you you're muted. I I think Anthony needs to unmute you. The meeting host, the meeting host had, did that. So two two comments, it seems to me that this is going to affect. A lot of people. And when I read the summaries. To me, it just doesn't spell everything out as you pointed out. So I would suggest you have a much more detailed summary.
Walt, where are you going?
Well.
Sorry. I've got a hearing aid problem, so, yeah. Let me in once more, will you? Okay. So anyway, when I read this, you've talked about water heaters. We're all gonna need a new water heater, and the summary doesn't say water heaters are excluded. It just says non electric cooking appliances and fireplaces. And is that, so the question is, A, when I replace my gas water heater. Do I, can I put a new one in? Secondly, somewhat contrary to Elizabeth. Uh, I would have to run a massive electric system into my pool house. All because I have a twenty five year old heater that I use probably twice a year. Thirdly, it seems to me this this question. About the ADUs, if I read this correctly. We're betting all our money on ADUs, at the same time, if I have an ADU where somebody parks on my property. I have to put in EV. And that doesn't mean in my garage, that doesn't mean right outside my garage, wherever the person's parking, because that's the only place they could do it. So if you could clarify those points, I'd much appreciate it.
I think he's waiting for us.
Only applies to new construction.
Yeah. It only goes with new construction. So you have an existing house, so you don't need to replace anything.
But what if you built an ADU?
So it only applies to new construction, and and I don't think it would apply to altering a. Uh, accessory building that's already built and having to comply with the new ADU requirements. This only applies to new construction. Well, it says the ADU provided with off street parking shall provide EV. And that's for a new house being built and new. Okay. Doesn't say.
It's all new construction.
New construction only.
Well, we are encouraging that too, aren't we? New construction, sure. I have a survey that says I'd be encouraged to do that.
I hope you filled it out and sent it in.
To do that.
Uh, Mike, Mike Child, could you? Connect to him, Anthony.
Yep, I I agree with some of the prior comments, one, I think this is a fairly radical proposal. The fact that other cities are doing it is fine and wonderful, but the. The impact of of the small town of Atherton adopting this this ordinance. Doesn't have any significant impact on the world or anywhere, and there's no reason we need to be early with this. Um, second, I do read that as saying, Rick, that if I build an ADU on my property, it has to be all electric. And if I, at my understanding of the of the of the of the resolution says that if I remodel more than fifty percent of my house. I have to bring everything up to the current code, so I'd like some clarification on that, because I I think both of those things would have a chilling effect on us. Trying to solve our housing problem with with ADUs.
Yeah, so for for new ADUs, yes, that that will be required. The off street parking or an EVC station in the parking area of the ADU. But it just applies to the new construction, you're talking fifty percent remodel net, that's not new construction. It's new construction to that existing home, but it's not considered new construction. The definition that the energy code has for new construction is a building that has never been used or occupied. For any purpose, that's new newly construction, that is their definition.
If I build a new ADU, is that new construction or not?
Absolutely, it's new construction.
And that then would have to be all electric, is that correct?
Yes.
I I think that's a mistake, I think that should be struck. Thank you.
Okay, Stacy Hahn.
Uh, I just wanted to get some clarity, I read the code and the language that we use says qualifying alteration projects. Are included into this, and. Now I'm hearing in this meeting that it's just for new builds and not if we're doing fifty percent new construction on your existing property. So I was just wanting to get some clarity.
Good evening, the intent of that provision, the qualifying alterations, is to establish a lower threshold for what would qualify as new construction. It states that if there's fifty percent of the foundation replaced for purposes other than repair. So it's getting replaced to be structurally reinforced, for example, because you're adding a story or something. Or if you're removing more than fifty percent of your structural walls, meaning essentially your roof kind of has to come off your building. That be beyond that threshold, we would count as new construction, what we're. Uh, recommend, why we're recommending this is because in some cities it becomes a loophole of sorts where. Uh, a building owner tears down everything but one wall on their property, and that qualifies as an alteration. That type of scenario is a perfect time to decarbonize your home, and we want to ensure that there's some lower threshold defined.
That's that's a, that's a complete, you know, everything down but the what the one partial partial.
That's, that's a, that's a complete, you know, everything down, but the, what the one partial, partial part, part of a wall. That's different than saying two walls and you just have to take your roof off. There may be other parts of the house that are not going to be changed.
It's, yeah, it's greater than fifty percent of the structural wall. So it's, you know, uh, it could be two walls that are coming. A part like totally coming down, again, not for purposes of repair, but getting structurally replaced or reinforced. Um, it's not a remodel situation either. You could be doing a remodel throughout your whole house. But if you're not replacing the foundation, if you're not replacing the structural walls, then that does not qualify as a, as one of these qualifying alterations.
Elizabeth, did you have the question?
I was going to say just what he said.
Okay, so it's not clear to me what is being proposed. With respect to. Remodels.
No, what, what Mike said is different from that.
Yeah.
What, what do we have in our ordinance?
Read the words.
The, the ordinance just says newly constructed and based on your definition doesn't match. That definition. So we need to figure out which one the ordinance is actually including.
And, and if somebody's building a JADU, it's attached to the old house, the current house. But they may have to put in some supporting because they're extending now. You'd have to make that all electric. I don't agree with that.
No, you don't. That's an addition.
Okay, well, that needs, he, well, this is not what the gentleman said. He said, if you do any alteration to the foundation. It's, it's got to be upgraded.
Up to fifty percent, fifty percent.
You're tearing down the whole structure and you're remodeling and you're recreating fifty percent of your foundation. That's what he's talking about.
Always been my understanding that if you're going to remodel fifty.
Right, that's, that's what we're, we're trying to.
I can't find that line. I don't see that language either. Yeah, I, I think that, you know, we just need to have clarity in this thing. So when people are looking at the ordinance. It's very, very clear what they have to do and what they don't have to do.
Agreed, we're working on that one.
Tonight's the night to do it.
Right here.
No.
Well, must be put your off.
Well, that's okay. We can do that too, but just the first reading and that's what they want to bring back next month.
The point that, uh. Building an ADU and it requiring it to be all electric with the existent, existing service entrance equipment. I could kill the deal. You've got to go from a four hundred amp service to a twelve hundred amp service or whatever it might be. It's, it's an issue.
But we have to remember the whole goal of what we're doing here is that we're trying to go electric here is in one of the philosophies we proposed. When we talked about this is that we went really hard on electric cars. Because in Atherton, we have a very high adoption rate of electric cars. And by, I don't know, Stacy can correct me on what year we're going to not even be able to buy an electric car in California. And the infrastructure that we're talking about and making decisions for is for the next thirty, forty years. So the more we can encourage it to transition, the more we're not going to leave people with building something that they're going to have to tear out.
I, I agree, I agree with you, but we have this other goal about getting a bunch of ADUs built. I was just pointing out the possible conflict, that's all.
Yeah, I agree. We can do that, that'll take care of all that.
I hope so, yeah.
It should.
Can I just interject really quickly? Sorry, uh, there's a lot of research that says remove, not having to build out the gas infrastructure. Does reduce your construction costs. So it would be cheaper to build all eighty, all electric ADUs.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that, that, that's a good point. Uh, when we built this new town center. We didn't connect any natural gas and because we didn't have the natural gas infrastructure. Of all the piping and the meters, we save thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. Now, it may be that some electrical appliances are more expensive than some gas appliances, but when you don't have to include the infrastructure. From what I've read, you save a lot of money. Uh, that, that's part of the rationale for new construction being all electric. So if a new ADU is being constructed. If there's already a gas pipeline and meter that would be going to it, then. If it's already in place, then that's one thing, but if you have to put in new infrastructure, it's going to be more expensive.
I don't think the code differentiates on that. If it's a brand new ADU, even though you may have a gas line that runs out to. Uh, if you're building from scratch, a new building, never been used, never been inhabited, that's all electric regardless of that gas line.
Yeah, but and, and what if you have a poolhouse that you add a kitchen to? And, and, and that qualifies as an ADU, would that be considered a remodel and therefore it doesn't apply this, this order?
Be a remodel operation, that's correct.
So, did you have a clarification?
I have two clarifications, uh, council, if that's all right. Um, one is the qualifying alteration. Uh, that is actually an anomaly. What I was referring to was based on our model language. Um, that is not being incorporated into the Atherton City Council, the, the code. So what the, I believe our conclusion is that we're going to strike that language and qualifying alterations because it's not defined. Um, it was, uh, left in there inadvertently. So we're going to remove that because we're not defining it. And the second one is regarding, um, electric vehicle charging capacity for ADUs. Um, there is a requirement if there is going to be a panel upgrade or a parking addition. Um, for detached ADU. Then that, uh, panel upgrade would have reserved breaker spaces and panel capacity. And not necessarily running a receptacle line or electrical line to that parking space for that ADU. Um, that's going to be a, you know, at, at will project. What the code would require is just the reserved electrical capacity for that. Sorry about this confusion.
Uh, I think the other question is pool heaters.
Right, so let me just see, is there any other public comment? I don't see any other public comment in the room or online, so I'll bring it back to the council. Go ahead, Bill. Okay, so I appreciate all the, uh, clarification. I think we just need to be very clear. When we rewrite this document. I believe that, uh, you know, I don't have a problem if we write into somewhere. That when you replace things, you know, you, you need to use the new energy star efficiency appliances, which is mentioned in here. And I, I, I think that that's a good idea. I'm, I'm still on with the gas, uh, poolhouse. If you have, or if you have a gas poolhouse, I guess we've kind of answered that. That, uh, or if you have a gas poolhouse and you have. A gas attached to it is where the filter is. That's gas, okay? But the poolhouse currently is not, but you're going to upgrade that. Because the gas line is already in the building. Or, you know, attached to the building. Does that apply?
It's an existing structure. It's an existing poolhouse.
Okay.
So it would not apply.
So if somebody takes the filter house and then expands it to an ADU, it's already got the gas in it, then what?
What do you mean the filter house?
They, they, they have a little house that's got the filter in it running. Or, or not the filter, but the, the heater and stuff.
Pool equipment.
And then, yeah, the pool equipment, and then they decide to add on to that to make a small ADU. Is that a remodel or is that?
It's an, it's, it's an existing structure, but.
No, no, no.
If it's not a habitable structure, if it's a tool shed that you're gonna have your pool equipment in. And then you're going to expand that tool shed, turn it into a habitable space. I think that's.
That would be new because you'd have to tear it down to start over, to be honest.
I'm just asking because those questions will come up and we want to make sure our, our ordinance is clear.
Yep.
Uh, I, you know, personally, I know we're not going to apply it here, the fifty percent, but I think the fifty percent at this point in time. There are a lot of electric cars, but they're not that many. And when you block other people from parking there, then it creates a big problem.
Well, every circumstance is going to be different. So you have to work around all these, uh, various challenges. But even with a new construction and if there's existing gas to the property. You're still going to have to bring electricity to that new structure. I mean, it's not like you're going to take extension cords from the old, you know, existing house and put it in your new ADU. So to make that new ADU all electric is not going to be a big deal. And if you don't have the infrastructure of having to run new gas, um, pipes and, you know, maybe even a meter. Cause you're going to, uh, meter that gas or electricity use for the renter. You know, it's, it's, I don't think it's a big deal. I don't think it's that, a, a, a big hardship to make that ADU all electric. I think it's a step in the right direction. Absolutely.
I'd say it's a great step in the right direction, but I am saying. Uh, currently, if you already have a gas line there, the use of gas energy is cheaper currently. And it's more reliable than it is with electricity. Notice all the blackouts we still have here. The grid isn't a hundred percent right yet.
I have to respectfully disagree with you on that comment.
We know that the gas stoves are toxic for indoor air. The research that just came out of Stanford is very strong on that. And we, we have a fire thing. We were just hearing about the fire rules. When you have those gas lines going back. And there's an earthquake, those gas lines are more likely to kill people than even the earthquake. That's right in your document we just read. So there's a lot of reasons for us to try to get rid of that. A lot of reasons, a lot of health reasons.
My understanding is if there's an existing building such as a poolhouse. That is getting modified and upgraded to be an ADU. That the all-electric provision will not apply.
Correct.
That if someone is building from scratch an ADU. Uh, the all-electric provision would apply if someone's building a new house. And, and with or without an ADU, that the all-electric provision would apply with the exceptions to the main house.
That's right.
The. So, I.
Okay, I'm okay with ADUs. Brand new ADUs being built from the ground up.
I do think the point of use of, of not forcing people to use a different. Mechanism when there's already infrastructure going there is, is important. Otherwise, it totally makes that infrastructure obsolete. But I don't think we're doing that if it doesn't apply to conversion, for example, of a poolhouse to an ADU.
Yeah, I just want to have all that cleared up.
Okay.
Uh, uh, in, in the ordinance, I'm, I'm still looking at this issue of non-residential. Occupancy class B offices.
Can you show us when, what you're.
Where there is shared parking, because there was this, this seems to have been included, even though we don't have anything that fits that category.
For the non-residential office.
So I, I think that's. Point, uh, five point one oh six point five point three point one.
Ri- right now, it does apply to city hall. So if we were to remove it, that's fine as long as we're not building anything new.
Well, we could just, we could remove just the new construction item. I mean. I suppose we could leave it if we want to, because who knows? Some city council in the future could rezone all of Atherton and make it a commercial district.
Oh, yeah, that is.
But if that were true, then we're requiring fifty percent of the parking spaces for that structure. To be either EV charging stations or EV capable. That seems aggressive. I, I can't believe that anybody's going to do that.
It seems aggressive to me. I agree with you.
Fifty percent of the parking spaces having, I mean, if, if you have an EV charger and you're not electric, you can't try, you can't park there.
I thought that we agreed that we were going to strike that.
Yes, we were.
Well, that's what I'm asking about.
We're taking that out.
Yeah, gonna take it out.
Okay. Based on those chapters, are we ready to make a motion?
Striking the non-residential, that whole paragraph, that office, right.
That's a section for new construction on non-residential occupancy class B offices. Because I guess the existing building does apply to the town hall. And I think we should eat our own dog food if we're applying, if we're applying it to others, we should absolutely apply it for ourselves.
Yeah, but we're able to commercial build it down. But I don't think that's.
Well, they have offices there.
But the circus club wouldn't qualify. That'd be a, that'd be a. Not other non-residential occupancy, not an office.
But I'll just say, council member Hawkins, well, Ian did bring up a good point that there are so many. Um, electric cars and without, uh, the infrastructure of charging them. I mean, e- every home in Atherton practically, I, I'm generalizing right now. Have at least two, and if they don't have two EV chargers, you know, in their, um, property. Uh, where do they charge their, um, cars?
I, I suspect as EVs proliferate, that the requirement that the spaces be EV only. Probably because the demand will go up and jurisdictions will add more parking spaces that are EV only, that that EV only criteria will fade.
I see.
I, I would be in favor, as I said before, if we were to go ahead and we would have the requirement for, in the brand new houses. Not ADUs.
Okay.
Uh, would have two of the level two chargers as opposed to one level. A level one charger, which by the way, you'll charge it all night and all day, and maybe you'll get back to a hundred percent.
That's true, for the, for the long range vehicle. That's right.
I would love to be more aggressive on electric in the houses. I think that our residents will thank us because we're making that transition. And like I said, the stuff that's going in now is going to be in for a while. So we are more aggressive than I think the standard breach codes, but I'm, I could be wrong. I think we are, so we're already more aggressive, but I'd be more than glad to do what Bill was just saying.
Maybe we can ask the building department, I mean, how many EV chargers in your new construction, uh, that you're seeing? Are they like the, the new spec houses that are being built? I mean, are the developers putting them in?
Yeah, they're getting them.
So are they putting in one or two or four? I mean, some of these, uh, homes have, you know, parking for eight cars.
Yeah, because at first the code, the twenty nineteen only required a, or twenty sixteen required a level one. Capable. And then like, on this one here, single family dwelling, one dedicated EV ready level one. And one dedicated EV ready level two. Um, I can change, we can definitely make it both level two.
Yeah, because.
Eliminate the level one.
No, that's not true. And so clean energy has done a big study on this and level ones are not worthless. Level ones are very useful. And we're very actively putting, we're having to just hook up one twenty outlets. To most multifamily parking. Uh, areas is new. They don't have one twenty outlets and that's a level one. But they, they prove very valuable. I mean, lots, uh, we find that there's huge demand for that. Now, maybe that'll change in five or ten years, but right now, I'm just telling you.
Most of the new houses have two level twos, and they're the ones building the new construction, and I think we ought to do, go with that. Two level twos.
Is there a big price difference?
More than we're requiring.
Yeah, that's okay. We're putting in more than we're required for a lot of things in here.
Is there a big price difference I'm trying to ask between if you were to go to the effort of putting in?
Um, not in terms of the, the wiring, but in terms of the panel and capacity impacts, there might be a little bit, uh, you know, more space that's required there. But, um, not a big price difference, so.
Well, it's not a big price difference then.
I like it for the future a little bit.
Uh, I have a question. What, 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 what does the ordinance do with respect to? Uh, clothes drying and new construction? It's, it's a, it's electric for space heating, it's electric for water heating.
It's also electric for dryers.
Like, electric for gas dryers.
Don't want a gas dryer.
Oh, uh-uh, okay. And one of the big things is that everywhere where someone is able to. Put in the exception that we're authorizing and put in a gas appliance. They have to have the electrical hookup as if it were going to transfer. Would that be true with fire pits also? They, they'd have to have electricity there or?
I don't see a fire pit.
No, not outdoors, no.
But for cooking, that's where it's most relevant.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just would make a wood fire, like your husband.
What, so for barbecues, would that mean they'd have to put in a electrical facility where the barbecue is? Just for the stove top?
I have one last question. This is maybe a stupid question, but you, we hear about heat pumps all the time. So we're talking about going all electric on all our heat devices. Should we go the extra step to call it out as a heat pump? Is that a different technology?
That can heat and or cool.
In, in most cases, the energy code will already require a heat pump in those, so it's, it's not really necessary for that.
Great, thanks.
Are you talking specifically for clothes dryers or?
No, by anything cuz I'm seeing heat pump everywhere and I see that that's the more efficient way, but we're calling. Electric and I'm just unders, trying to understand if this is a specific kind of electric that we should go higher or if it's all the same.
It's space heating. So heat pump addresses space heating. That's what a heat pump does. It also adds cooling.
Yeah.
But the heat pump addresses space heating, which is currently. Most plentifully done with natural gas.
Heat pump technology is an amazing thing. It's also available for water heating as well as clothes dryers. Um, not cooking yet, unfortunately, uh, but. Um, yeah, yeah, there's multiple applications there, but the energy code usually dictates um, that a heat pump is is what's required, not resistance.
Electric.
Uh, not uh, electric heat pumps, not electric resistance.
I have another question.
Yeah, you said gas.
No, I said space heating. So does this have to be returned with modifications or?
You can introduce it with modifications as long as we agree on those tonight, and I can run through that at the end.
Will we do that?
Yeah, I'd like to go through those cuz I again, I mean, with the with the pool heaters, I would like to see. If you want to have both in there, fine, it's optional. What they can put in initially. Later on, when we've got more data and we prove that it's a hundred percent. And it's not gonna blow up your. Your panel. Then uh, you know, it can be, it can be mandatory, but at this point in time, I think it should be optional.
This is for new construction.
May I share? When uh, we have an existing cost effectiveness study from Santa Monica. They looked at this um, for the last code cycle. Unfortunately, there's not a cost effective study for this code cycle available for this climate zone. But um, in Santa Monica, they did find it to be pool heaters to be cost effective compared to a gas uh, basement.
Well, you can put all the data in there and let the builders have a choice. But again, I think it should be optional, just like we used to do all of our coat reaching, reaching is saying we're recommending this, but we never demand it. Now, we're in this case, we're in the demand stage or requirement stage. And I think pool heaters is one that I still am not comfortable in that it's just as efficient as a gas one. I think it should be recommended, but they can do it that way. And when there's more data later, we can always amend this to to then change it to it's demanded.
So would you be then saying that? If someone were to choose to use a gas heater for the pool pump. For new construction, they would have to bring electrical outlet and connection to that point. So that they would have the electricity right there to convert it.
I'd I'd agree with that amendment, yeah.
No, I I disagree.
I wanna add another curve out.
Yeah, I I disagree with that. And this is really only for new construction. And I think that.
But somebody decides to put a pool in their backyard, that's new construction.
Right, yes. So it wouldn't affect you, uh, you know, with your current pool. It would just be new construction. And I think that. Throughout. Our region, that is more the norm going forward. That developers and construction uh, technicians would, you know, pool installers would be used to doing. And to do both is more cost.
Just running a line out there, a line with a breaker that's not being used. It's not very expensive.
Probably there's a.
I disagree.
There, there's probably a a pump pumping water through the pool at the same location as the heater, whether it's electric or not. So the electricity is probably actually already there.
That's a question.
Yeah.
In the the studies that were attached here that had that whole uh, efficiency study, there were a whole bunch of other features like ducks and. Um, cool, cool roofs and insulation, a whole series of other things. Are those already in the green code? Or are there any of those that are uh, addressed in the reach code?
Um, under the proposal tonight, no, those are, those efficiency measures are not uh, being proposed. Um, those are provided as options if cities wants to adopt uh, cool roofs or duct ceiling. Um, I will say that the new construction code is already quite efficient um, and includes some of those elements.
So are there any that you would bring to our attention that we haven't talked about that we maybe should think about of those kinds of things?
Um, not in particular. I think the most impactful set of measures to decarbonize would be the electrification measures. I think that if. There's a particular concern around affordability, um, efficiency measures that are cost effective are a good choice, particularly at a time of new construction. If the emphasis is on decarbonization, um, the electrification measures would be most impactful.
I can run through the proposed provisions for introduction if you.
You wanna do that?
Sorry, Ms. Mayor.
Well, is there a motion?
Well, I don't wanna make a motion until we hear what they've recorded so far.
Well. Well. I'd like to make the motion that we adopt, uh, conduct the public hearing and waive the first reading. And introduced by title only this uh, ordinance amending chapter fifteen point nineteen of the Atherton Municipal Code. By adopting the twenty twenty two California Green Book Building Code and an EV charging and all electrification reach codes with exceptions. As uh, further detailed and itemized um, by the city manager and from the discussion we've just had.
Second. Okay, just clarification that where we refer to the exceptions in four point one oh six point five point one. We'll clarify that cooking appliances, barbecues, fireplaces and fire pits are accepted. Any other questions or comments?
I had, I had.
He's other revision. We have a, we have a motion and a second.
I think city manager is gonna go down uh, item by item, all the stuff that we.
Yeah, there's like four.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first was removing the non residential office new construction provision. Uh, the second was clarifying the indoor outdoor cooking fireplace stuff which you just articulated. Uh, and then with respect to exceptions, right now it's cooking and fireplaces, whatever those are delineated as. Where are pool heaters?
I think they should be with new construction, all electric. I agree.
I think they should be optional at this time. So amend it later when they become more efficient.
Based on so the.
There's. Gas ones.
The motion, the motion is to uh. And not include an exception for uh, for pool heaters. And you can make a motion to amend.
And then the last. To amend to make this uh, uh, optional at this time or recommended at this time. Um, and we can come back and we, as as with any of the ordinances, we can always come back and amend those anytime we would like to do that.
But you'll be creating gas lines. You're you're promoting more new gas lines if you're allowing that. So not another carve out.
There's already, there's already a gas line.
Nobody feels strongly about their pool heater. They may about a fireplace.
Bill, Bill absolutely has the right to make an amendment.
Okay.
Uh, he needs a second.
You didn't have one. Okay, second.
The last revision or question clarification is with respect to EV chargers, whether you wanted to do the level one and the level two. The level two or two level twos.
I want two.
So I have a question about that. If you do two level twos, that does not preclude you from plugging it into a level one hybrid? Or does it?
It's a requiring two level two installation.
It's requiring two level twos rather than one level two. And one level one.
Right.
And would there be a level two, I mean, an op, uh, sort of a compromise would be to have one level two and one level two capable?
Well, but I I guess my question, my clarification is if you've got a Tesla or and a, say, a Volt or a plug in hybrid, um. You know, SUV.
Residential.
Mercedes, something.
One dedicated.
That doesn't take a Tesla charge. What's the level two?
Yeah, can you explain it in layman terms? We're talking about how long it takes to charge a car, correct?
No.
One will charge longer.
Plug, it's the connection.
I I believe you need an adapter to go from level two to level one uh, some sort. If you have two level two in your garage. You you, I think you need a connection adapter to be able to plug in your level one charger, your your level one.
And so it won't blow up your uh, level one car? If you plug it into it.
Need to restrict the amount of.
You have to restrict it. Yeah, okay. Because the plugs don't work. I mean, they're different.
Yeah, they're different.
So if you have, if you have two level twos, all you need is your adapter to downsize it to stick it into your level one vehicle.
If our requirement, eh, this is a minimum requirement.
Right.
If our requirement is a minimum of one level one and one level two. If anyone wants in construction to do two level twos, they can do that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, I don't think, uh, there are plenty of cars that just need level one. I I drive one that charges one hundred percent. At night on level one. Um, that's because it's not two hundred and fifty miles of range.
Right.
But uh, but there are lots of cars out there and all the leaves, all the bolts are.
So.
There's a bunch of cars that. Do that. So I think as a minimum, we should have one level one and one level two. That's a good upgrade.
Is it because of the cost uh, effect effectiveness? I mean, it just costs too much?
It's more cost effective to plug into. I mean, it's more, no, it's not. It's not a costly thing. It's it's. It's more efficient for me to plug my car into a level two. It'll charge in two hours rather than in eight hours, but. But I don't, I don't need to do that, so I haven't actually installed that charger at my house.
I would need to do that.
So you should.
I.
I think, you know, with the houses that are being built today in Atherton, fifteen million dollars and up. You know, they're gonna probably, if they're gonna have those, they're gonna have bigger cars. They're gonna be driving to San Francisco or down to San Jose every day. It's gonna need to be charged. I don't see that there's a problem with adding something more than what we had talked about. I brought this up at the last time.
Oh, I forget that you did that.
Sorry, well.
A level one and a level two or two level twos?
What's the motion?
My motion is two level twos.
Um, I I discovered all EVs can use level one and level two. All come with level one quart sets, so it should be, it should be fine if it's two levels.
Okay, but it just takes the the amount of time for the the charge to happen.
As such, I'd like to amend your motion to add two level twos. To uh, versus a level one and a level.
And I will second your amendment.
Alright, thank you.
Good.
Okay, then we have amendments.
Two level twos.
Well, wait.
Required.
I, how do other people want? Do you, you want two level twos? I'm against two level twos, so I guess I'll vote against the motion.
Oh, okay.
Are you gonna vote? But you're the swing vote? No.
No, it's already passed.
Yeah, there are three of us.
So I'm staying. I don't think that we should eliminate Rick's. Participation on this. I think this is something that the whole council needs to approve. I'll withdraw my amendment.
Oh.
I think anybody can upgrade to two level two.
You know, I think it's. How would you like talking around saying?
How can you upgrade? You gotta bring in some more powers.
Oh, you just put in a level two.
It's for, it's for new construction. They could build with two level twos on their own.
I see.
In order to market it that way.
Yeah.
I just recommend they be forced to do it, but if Rick feels very upset about it, then I will draw it.
Why would you be so upset about it?
Because some people don't need it.
Why? But some people actually drive more than from.
Yeah.
Play drive up to the.
Same thing, whether we have an ordinance or not, it's not gonna.
But if they buy a spec house that only, you know, skimped on it and only did one level and a two level, you know, and then they go, oh, gosh, I've gotta upgrade and go.
But it's not, you, they're not gonna have to upgrade the panel. It just put it in a. But it's. Charging station. You can do it. I've I've done it.
I'd like to leave the motion in, you know, Bob, if Bob's in favor of it, then there's gotta be cost effective. There we go.
Bob's is. No, no.
Oh, is it?
Google.
Is it one and two or two twos?
Two twos. We've got the motion there.
I like the two two idea.
Two twos, you you withdraw the withdrawal of your motion.
Then I withdrew the withdrawal. Yes. I just want, I, yeah, I think it's important to have the mayor also participate in the vote positively as opposed to. You know, cuz he's been championing a lot of this stuff, and now suddenly he's gonna vote against it. How's that gonna look?
Uh, well, with two twos, I assume he's moving in that direction.
I don't know if he's moving in that direction. I know that he really asked for it to be one and two. Uh, and he said he would vote against it. With two tubes.
I'm, I'm very confused, but.
All I can do is tell you, PC has done a huge analysis about this. And concluded that level one availability for charging is extremely important. That's our principal focus. Is to level one enabled charging at parking spaces, level one, not level two. We, people can upgrade to level two. That's easy to do, but the most need right now, based on PC's analysis. Raphael's not on the phone, but. Uh, that's the analysis.
But that's at parking spaces. It's at somebody's home.
Entry level EVs.
Right.
Well, but they've already, we're requiring them to have one level two. Why do, why should we require them to have two if?
Cuz they will have, they'll be driving more, I would expect, than they would be having a larger car.
To, um, through, through the chair, I'm happy to offer um, some comment on this if that would be helpful.
Great.
I hope so.
Uh, this is Raphael Reyes, Director of Energy Programs for Peninsula Clean Energy. Uh, Mary DeGolli is right. We have done an analysis with regards to. Um, uh, the use of uh, the amount of capacity that's required for charging. Uh, most vehicles in our service territory typically drive thirty miles or less on a daily basis. And overnight charging level one is uh, sufficient uh, for that kind of commute. And in fact. Uh, somewhere on the order of uh, ninety five percent of of um, drivers in our service territory would be adequately served by uh, level one. Um, that said, uh, Hillsborough did adopt a code with two level twos um, as part of their um, reach codes for residential settings. Um, there is some merit. To having two level twos, um, as vehicles get larger, uh, then the efficiency of the vehicles goes down. Um, and Atherton uh, may wish to consider level twos in light of future vehicle needs uh, and possibly longer commutes. That said, it does put pressure on the panel capacity needs and uh, more pressure potentially on the grid. Um, so there is some benefit to having level one, um, but both options um, can be uh, can be valuable and certainly. From a just straight up cost difference, the cost is minor. Um, and it would not be significant, particularly in the context of new construction.
I I still feel two level twos because of the fact. The, as he mentioned, the cars are getting larger. Look at all the cars that came over, the electric cars that came over when we had our Earth Day. They were big.
Yeah, trucks.
You know, and there are gonna be more and more coming out that are gonna be fairly large.
Hammers.
But most people drive less than sixty miles a day, so level one is satisfactory for most people. Even if it's a large car, it's gonna, it's gonna generate more than sixty five miles of charge a night. And so it it, they're gonna charge more than they need for most driving, and if we're requiring one level two. They can easily charge up one car all the way and another car partway. I I don't think we should require that added expense. There's not a rational reason for it. Ninety five percent of the people get by with less than sixty miles.
And the ninety five percent's kind of the deal maker for me, one, one, two and one, one.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll withdraw my motion.
Can I add something? There's one topic on this that we didn't discuss at all, which was the carve out for gas uh, gas uh, what do you call it, generators?
Yeah, they're on there.
Turned it out, but there's no wording, no anything. And I'd like to see if we had any sort of wording we could put in. To encourage people to go for battery storage choices going forward as opposed to buying new propane type generators. So that's a whole other area that we we just kind of punted on and we didn't discuss at all tonight.
Okay, we make a, we can make a recommendation that says, you know, make sure people know when they come in. We do that. We do that today with a lot of those things. So you can recommend it, but we already.
Is there any more tea to than than just recommending it that we can do? Cuz we're talking about future building.
You'd have to codify it as a requirement for new construction. Right now it's carved out.
Yeah, for new, see, again, when when you talk about new construction, cuz your first thought is that we have a big diesel. Who he generator here in the town hall and a lot of people have them, but we really do wanna encourage people over time. And again, this is a building window of the next thirty, forty years. To look more at battery storage and options like that. So if there's any wording or anything we can add that. Would uh. Yay.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be thirty, forty years, actually.
Um, uh, the twenty twenty two energy code does include a provision for energy storage readiness. Um, for all new residential construction. um, for all new residential construction.
Yay.
So.
So they did it for us already.
It should be.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so I've taken notes with an eraser, so it's one and two?
One, 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 two.
One, 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 two.
All in motion.
Uh, okay, no more comments? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimously passed. Let's move on to item number eighteen. Oh, sorry, is it? It's an eight? No, it's eight.
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 And just.
This is consideration of appointment to the parking.
City attorneys wanting to talk.
Just, just a quick clarification, um, the previous ordinance did not pass. We just approved the first reading and it'll be back for second reading.
Right, yeah, we understood.
Right.
Motion was the first reading.
Then we're gonna get two tubes. No.
Two tubes.
Okay, uh, the next item is consideration appointment to the parking rec committee.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, um.
Thanks, everyone.
Wrong, John.
So as you know, we have a few vacancies, uh, for town committees and commissions. Um, and on our park and rec committee, we have one vacancy, environmental programs committee, one vacancy, bike and ped two, and, uh, transportation, I think we have one. We're doing a continuous recruitment where we're always open and soliciting candidates. And we received one for the park and recreation committee. Um, and that one candidate was Mr. Robert Rosa, who I believe is in attendance today. Um, and you know, the mayor may give you an opportunity to speak to your application if you'd like. My suggestion is that after he addresses the, uh, council, you can take a motion. And if you choose to, uh, appoint this one applicant. And this is for a term to fill the vacancy that was left by a midterm resignation. And the term expires in June twenty twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Correct.
This man's not qualified. He doesn't know anything.
Meeting adjourned.
No.
To talk about the electrification.
Should we have two level two parking spaces?
Well, I'm not, uh, concerned about whether it's level one or two. I have a, a Tesla and, uh, I have to charge it seven days to get it to its three hundred and twenty-five miles on a level one.
Yeah.
Um, so, but if you don't drive that much every day, you know, you can get by. If you wanna go on a trip, you better know where the chargers are. You're gonna be stuck somewhere.
Think of the Stanford Shopping Center, they've got super chargers on the second floor of the.
Well, I have to put in a level twos charger.
That's right.
And it's about a hundred and fifty feet to my box to get the, the, the connection. And the box isn't big enough, so I have to redo my entire electric system to, um, be able to get, you know, charged, to get my car getting, getting charged. Well, I've been concerned on the, on the change, really. I shouldn't say this is, when we get all this, uh, done and get the gas changed, the electric, and we get all these electric cars in at the level that they're talking about. I don't know if there'll be any electrons to run through the wires, but I'm hoping for that. And there's some really, uh, concerning articles being written about that. But anyway, that's not what I'm here for. I'm here to talk about the, uh, parking rec. First thing is Holbrook Palmer Park. What a fabulous place that is, and I'm there all the time. Uh, there, it's such a, a quiet and comfortable place. It's great for walking. The sound you hear are kids having fun, people celebrating events, um, people getting married, um, kids playing soccer or just kicking a ball around on the grass. And it's just so rewarding of a place and it is just, it's just amazing. And, uh, one of the things, when you have something like that, you have a couple of major things. One is maintenance. And, uh, the second thing is, we'd like to improve it. We'd like to improve it. And much of that comes through the park and rec committee before it goes to, um, to the, uh, town council. And I believe that I can help with that exercise. And I would, um, enjoy very much, uh, being on park and rec again to participate in their responsibilities.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
Bob, uh, obviously there's one candidate, but even if there's more, you're imminently qualified. Can you speak to the council with regards to, uh, a lot of interest today from people about pickleball?
I was hoping you wouldn't bring up pickleball.
Excuse me?
Here's, here's my view on pickleball. Pickleball is, is so, uh, popular. And I have many friends who love it. Okay, they just love pickleball and that's fine and that's good. And, um, I haven't played, but I have been close to courts and have friends who just tell me I should be playing pickleball. And I say, you know, when I get old, I'll do that. Um, but it's the thing with me and bringing things into the park is, is you wanna be careful about bringing things in that interfere with other things that are already happening. Okay, and my belief is that there are some potential interferances by bringing, uh, pickleball into the park and taking away a tennis court. And, um, the noise for both neighbors and for, uh, people in the park where they wanna go and maybe sit and read a book or have a quiet thing. But you have to go in that, near a pickleball for its noise. I don't know that it's a complete barrier, Bill, but I think it does have a high frequency, fairly loud sound to it. And, uh, I don't know how the neighbors, whether, whether that'll work for the neighbors. There are a lot of areas where neighbors are really upset with the sound of pickleball. But that's one thing that the park and rec would deal with and look at the, the options and the issues and figure out how to solve them.
Well, I would hope that when you're looking at the noise, you would also compare it to the noise you have when you have a baseball game on or when the train is going by. And as we increase the number of trains we're having to multiple in the morning and in the afternoon, uh, which is gonna be, most of the time the gates will be down. Uh, I think you need to consider that, so.
Well, the.
I just appreciate it that, first off, I appreciate you serving. You're imminently qualified, you've been on the, before, we've had a lot of great discussions. I just hope we all have an open mind on at least evaluating it, just so we can put to rest the people that are questioning it.
I agree with that. I mean, we have, we have residents that are very much interested in it. And it's our responsibility to, to take their comments and their interests and figure out if we can make it work. Uh, the train takes fourteen seconds to go past the tennis courts, just in case you're interested in that. What was the other thing? Was it noisy?
Baseball games?
Baseball games, they seldom play.
Covers for them now, too.
They play three months about, you know.
February to, to, through June.
Right, and they generally play at the time when nobody's doing much of anything. We never had.
It's all on Saturdays.
Hmm.
It's all on Saturday.
Well, Saturday would be an issue, but I don't know much about the baseball interference because they don't play.
Yeah.
When I'm there walking or.
Okay.
Relaxing or playing tennis. So I can't really speak to them.
They have, they have rubber covers for the paddle, for the rackets now. They're like the ping pong stuff that you put on ping pong and it really affects the sound. So I hope you guys will look at that.
Anyway, I, my comment is, I just want, want everything, you know, the, 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 uh, especially your leadership role that would be there since you're very senior member. That, you know, we would encourage everybody to be, um, open minded to at least evaluate. And then we can make decisions on what do we need to do from there. So the evaluation would be very, very important.
I, I agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
Hey.
You all have, you have my full support one way or the other, but I did wanna just ferret this out.
Okay, thank you.
Before I take more comments, let me see if there's any public comment on this. I don't see any public comment. Any other comments from the council?
Nope.
I'm glad you applied.
Yes.
I will move to accept Bob as a member of Park and Rec. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Welcome to Park and Rec.
Again.
Again. Uh, the next item on the agenda is item number nine, player capital tennis rent credit for tennis court closures associated with the overlay of the tennis courts at Holbrook Palmer Park.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you know, over the last year, we have, um, overlaid all five non-clay tennis, non-clay courts at Holbrook Palmer Park. We've received positive feedback in terms of the new conditions of the, of the tennis courts. They are like new at this point. And so, um, as part of that process, it required closure of the various courts, um, to accommodate that work. Uh, it takes longer to do the process that we did in terms of overlaying the courts with, uh, new asphalt as opposed to the previous surface treatments that we had. And, um, through the, due to the closures, we've received a request from, uh, Michael Jessup at Player Capital for a rent credit, um, in the amount of, I think, uh, thirty-one sixty-six, um, and change. Um, and he's attributing that to the length of the closures. I think Michael Jessup is on the line with us today to provide some additional feedback. Um, but the request, and since our agreement with Player Capital Tennis is silent on this issue, um, we're bringing it forward to the council for, uh, direction.
Any questions?
Yeah. Uh, Robert, um, my understanding is I've had conversations with Michael before. And then, you know, of course you've covered some of that while you were here in your, in your discussion. Um, my understanding was that, uh, Players Capital asked us to redo the courts with this new method because the other old method didn't last very long and did develop cracks. So he asked us to do this, uh, and he asked us to do, you know, all the courts while we were, while we were at it. So it was his request that we specifically went this route. Is that not correct?
Um, you say you are correct in terms of the treatment that we were doing before wasn't adequate. It didn't last very long. And with coordination with Michael Jessup and Player Capital, we came up with this alternative solution, which is going to provide significant longevity to the surface there. And, uh, yes.
So did he understand the impact it would have with having to close the court?
Um, I believe he knew that it would have an impact on closure. I don't know, you can ask Michael as to what he felt in terms of what that length would be. But we knew that it would take longer than the other type of treatment.
But he's asking for renew, remuneration for the total time of the.
I think your question's done.
Well, no, I was asking a follow-on question, like, uh, but he's asking for remuneration for the total time of all the develop, of all the, uh, treatment from day one to.
But he, he's asking for a partial credit due to, um, limited court closure. So for example, for the May through June period where we research, where we redid the back three courts, he's asking credit for two courts. And when we did the work on the front two courts, um, he's asking for, um, a month related to one court. So he kind of broke it up in, in that regard. So for the treatment that happened for the three courts between May second and June twelfth, he's asking for like twenty-three hundred and then the remainder related to the, um, the loss of a court in the front. Um, but again, Michael Jessup is on the line if you wanna ask him questions directly.
Uh, Bob?
I have no questions, just comments.
Okay.
Time come.
Uh, good. Okay, any other question? Okay, is there any public comment on this matter? Greg, you wanna see if Michael wants to? Okay.
I'm not sure this is appropriate, but I wanna ask it anyway. You know, I had a neighbors that just moved into my, next door to me. They have two children that wanna play tennis and for some reason they were unable to get on the courts. And I just thought I'd, I should probably raise this with Bill since you're the council member that's responsible for the tennis. But is there some problem here that?
Oh, it's okay. It's Rick. He's the park and rec.
Oh, Rick is. You know, I just don't understand, uh, or is all the construction done now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
So all the courts are open?
It's all perfect. And, and they can make a reservation. There's a reservation system that is available. They can make it, make a reservation. They have to have a key to play.
Well, no, but I'd say, you know, they just bought a seven million dollar house, so I'm sure they can afford a key.
Yeah. They can buy a key and they can absolutely make a reservation and Michael can address that.
Or is there a restriction on the instruction? Maybe it was, they were trying to get teaching lessons.
Well, they have that too. They can get that, but they have to sign up with Michael Jessup to get the, the lessons. He's the instructor.
Yeah, they're scheduled, they're scheduled.
He has to schedule it.
Yeah, Greg, if you want them to contact.
Should we work with Robert?
That's fine.
Cause I, you know, they were, uh, somewhat disappointed and I, I couldn't, I, I, I play up at Sharon's, so I don't play it over there. So I don't know what the situation is. But I'll, I'll deal with it.
They can contact, Michael, please, uh, clarify, they can just contact you if they want lessons, you can work with them on that. And if they wanna make a reservation, there's a open reservation system, correct?
Correct, yeah, so they can, uh, reserve courts. Um, sometimes obviously during the peak times where everybody wants lessons, there may not be availability. You know, so that could be an issue. And then also, as with a lot of small businesses, there's actually not enough workers or tennis pros or people. So we are, you know, sometime, once in a while, we are short-staffed and not able to, um, unfortunately, you know, fulfill the demands of everybody, you know. Ideally.
I'll get, I'll get the contact information from Robert.
Yeah.
But, uh, have you got a grass court now? Is that open to the public?
Yeah, it's a clay grass. When you buy it, when you, yeah, when you, when you red, make a reservation there and you buy a key, you buy those here from.
Right.
Us. That will give you access to both the, the clay courts and the hard courts. There's one clay court, five hard courts. The clay court is open most of the time.
Yeah.
So.
Is there, do you have grass? Would you have one grass court?
No.
No.
Just clay. Okay, alright, well, I, I'll, uh, work with Robert and we'll call Michael's contact information. I'll get my neighbor happy. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. Any, Bob, you have a comment?
I don't know.
No, this Bob.
But there's, I just don't want, uh, it, there may be any misunderstanding about the tennis courts. I'm not speaking for Michael, but, um, the clay court is generally not available for tennis. Okay, it's just not available. And then when we had two courts out for reset, for recoding, it really became difficult to have enough courts where people played. It may have happened during that time period where the clay can't, you can't play in the clay very frequently. And maybe there were two courts out. So without the clay and with the pickleball, we'll be down to, uh, two fewer courts. And then we'll have four courts to try to get all the people with keys and Michael to get in his teaching. So just for clarity, I wanted everybody to know that.
Unless you set certain times only for pickle.
There's not pickleball there now and, and the clay court, the last time I walked by it, which was last week, it looked great.
Yeah.
It looked better than I've ever seen it.
And I've seen people.
We just had it serviced.
Yeah. It looks really good.
Yeah, and I've seen people playing on it.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
I don't have any.
I think, I think this re.
Excuse me. I think this request looks, uh, very reasonable and I recommend we, I make a motion that we approve it as soon as possible.
Is there a second? I don't hear a second. Some, does someone wanna make a comment?
So I, I'll, I'll make a comment. When I first read this, you know, Michael, you know, I'm a really big fan of yours, actually. And I'm so happy that you are, uh, providing, uh, this, uh, service, really, it's your business, I know, but this service to the town. And it's been really, I think, very, very well received. But it was, I, I mean, I, my mind kind of went to the, um, thought that if you were, uh, not renting from the town, but if you were, had your own courts, let's say, and you had to resurface them, you would have to, you would have had some downtime. So I just kind of felt that coming back to the town, because, um, I think the town paid for all of the upgrades, the improvements. And, um, I guess, you know, you had to close it. I mean, is there a reason that you're asking for this, um, remuneration, um, for lost time? Was it because you felt that, uh, we didn't handle the construction? handle the construction, uh, quick enough or, uh, stage it so that you wouldn't have this, uh, loss of business? I, I, I just don't understand. Because it seems like a small amount of money. And of course, I think that town could, um, certainly, I guess, uh, afford it. I, it just, it just didn't make sense to me as a business owner, because if I, um, I mean, I kind of, uh, feel like it's my responsibility if I have to make a repair to, uh, uh, something. Uh, and I'm out of business for a, a month or so, uh, that's just my business loss.
Yeah, Michael, you're on mute.
I think Anthony's taking you off mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. So, well, my thinking was like during that time I had to rent courts from Menlo Park. And so if you don't have a long-term contract, the hourly rate is quite high versus if you have a long-term. So, you know, it's, you know, basically twenty-two dollars an hour if you, if it's, if it's a short-term thing over that time period, it comes out to quite a bit versus, you know, and because obviously it's a short term since I'm back at Holbrook Palmer Park. So without a long-term deal, you're paying quite a bit in court fees just to during that time. So that was the, the thinking to my thinking.
I understand. Yeah, I understand. It's just.
I guess, if, if I can just add, Michael, my thinking was, well, when we used to resurface the court, you would lose the court, you would lose whatever court is being resurfaced for a short period of time.
Right.
But they would have to be resurfaced more often. And this one, the surfacing is pretty long-term, right? I mean, you're, you're going to have these courts in good condition for a much longer period of time than for the less expensive resurfacing. So you won't have any interruption for quite a while.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, Bill.
Yeah, um, so I did understand from Robert's discussion and the staff report that he said that the resurfacing of the courts took longer than expected or longer than anticipated for whatever reason. You know, I saw that the fence was down for quite a long time and, you know, after they had the asphalt down, you know, it had to sit and cure for days and days uh, before it could be painted and then made ready. So what was the additional time that was taken that you believe was really?
Uh, I, I, I'm going to say, I don't think it was necessarily extraordinary. It's just a lot longer than the other treatment. And so when we did the other treatment, it generally took a couple of weeks.
Yes.
To take care of it.
Yeah.
Couple of days, Michael?
Three days, yeah.
Well, I, okay. So I understand. You answered it. Thank you very much. So it was what was anticipated.
Okay. So. Nobody wants to second my motion? I don't feel strongly about it when I read the other one I saw.
So I'd like to make a motion that we reject this request. With all due respect, uh, you know, I understand the situation that uh, Mr. Jeff was in, but I think that where we are, so I think.
You've got a motion on the floor right now.
But there's not a second.
No, no, but second.
Floor.
But so I'm making a, an alternate motion.
Okay.
Motion to reject the, the request.
So, um, I'm going to, uh, modify council member Toledo's, uh, motion of, uh, just re-refunding the entire amount and, uh, make it so that we refund fifty percent of it. Uh, I, I, I feel that there's some, uh, amount that we should, um, refund, uh, because of, um, maybe just doing it all at one time and not keeping one court open or something so that you had to do that. But I feel like just refunding the entire amount is, is excessive.
They had courts open all the time. They did three and then two.
But I don't want to reject the entire.
So there's an amendment to the motion. Well, if, if you have a rules of order issue, go ahead.
Yeah, it is. So Bob had a motion that didn't get a second. Bill had a motion. I don't think there was a request for a second. So if there's no second, then she can amend the earlier motion.
Right.
Okay.
I amended the first one.
So, so what, what George is saying is your amendment is out of order until we clarify that there's not a second.
He has a motion on the floor. It needs to be seconded.
Now, is there a second for Bill's motion? Okay, I don't see a second for that motion. So I can recognize you. And you're making an amendment to Bob's motion. Is that amendment accepted?
It's actually, um, this would actually be a new motion since, um, council member Plato's motion did not get a second. It, it actually dies on the floor. So council member Lewis's motion is a new motion.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we have a new motion to uh, approve fifty percent of three thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. Okay, I'll, I'll second that due to the fact that we also gave rebates and alternate pricing to the play school. Only on that reason. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for, uh, to give Player Capital a credit, a rent credit of fifty percent of three thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so was that an aye in favor or an aye opposed? Okay, so that's unanimously accepted. Uh, we're moving on to item number ten, which is adopted resolution supporting.
Yeah. So.
Thank you, Michael.
Michael. I hope that's, uh, okay with you. Uh, thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. And the courts look great. So, um, yeah, very appreciative and everybody loves it. So, uh, thank you very much.
Yeah, they look spectacular.
And you're going to get two new, uh, clients because, uh, Greg Conlon's neighbor.
Yeah, Mr. Conlon's going to get some.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, item number ten, adopt a resolution supporting El Camino Real Complete Streets Gap Closure Project. Submitting a grant application to San Mateo County Transportation Authority for project planning funds.
Alright, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Back in August of this year, the San Mateo County Transportation Authority released a call for projects for, under its bicycle and pedestrian program. Uh, they have approximate, they had approximately sixteen point seven four million dollars available for capital projects. Um, most of which about eleven point two million was geared towards large capital projects. Um, in reviewing their grant criteria and our bicycle pedestrian master plan, um, the project that we have on our books in terms of, um, qualifications and something that would score well were improvements along El Camino Real. Um, that's, uh, it's a long-term vision. It's a really expensive project to implement. It's multi-jurisdictional in nature. And it's also on a regionally significant route. Um, for all of these re- reasons in reviewing uh, our projects, our ability to deliver and in court and in consultation with the transportation authority, we thought that this would be a great fit. They thought it would be a great fit for their program. And we had originally had our aspirations higher in terms of what we would ask for. Um, in consultation with them, we pared it down to the initial planning effort. And so what we are asking for, what we did ask for was, um, funds to, um, develop the project study report, really do a deep dive analysis in what improvements could and would look like, including the public outreach efforts with our community and our neighbors. Um, as well as initiating the environmental documentation for the project. The TA is also offering to applicants what they term technical assistance. Uh, either through the use of their consultants or actually some help in terms of coordination with other jurisdictions, coordination with Caltrans and others in terms of helping move the project forward. That is outside of our grant request. So it's money that, additional money that they would be putting towards the ta- on the table for, uh, their staffing and, and that kind of thing. Um, so our request for the grant was, uh, just over one point four million dollars. Uh, we put in, uh, that we would match with a hundred and seventy-five thousand. The grant application requires a resolution of support from the town so that they can, uh, take it forward. With that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, questions, Bill?
Um, how much input are we going to have on this joint design?
We are going to be trying to drive the bus, meaning that it's really, it's our segment of roadway. We do have some things that we need to tie into such as the infrastructure that is to the north of us. There are sidewalks in Redwood City and in unincorporated San Mateo County. There's also a project that is currently under development uh, in Redwood City. Um, there's a shop pro, shop project being developed by Caltrans to put in class four bike lanes um, north of us as well as we need to tie into the in, want to tie in to the south in Menlo Park. Um, as you know, our jurisdictional limits kind of cut off near Watkins. But it's really important that we provide a real segment, um, that doesn't leave a gap. And so we're looking at this really as a gap closure project where we can provide pedestrian facilities along El Camino. As you know, everybody's walking on the shoulder. Um, there's really, it's a really high stress level roadway. So walking or biking along El Camino is really challenging and difficult. And as you know, while we were under construction here, there was a period of time that we actually blocked off one lane for a block to provide some pedestrian accommodation.
Yeah, but, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to have some input. I mean, there is key input that's needed.
Yes.
You know, for this to be done. Do we want, uh, a two and two, or do we want a a, a two, three lane? All those things I think we should, we should have a little bit of input in. Secondly, I think that, uh, uh, and I'm not sure what their position is. I know the old fire chief was adamantly against this. And I don't know what the new fire chief says, and I don't know what our chief says with regards to response times, uh, you know, especially at, uh, you know, rush hour times in the morning and the afternoon.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think that all of those things need to be analyzed. And I'm going to say that I don't think that I'm going to say, this being a state highway, we also not only need to get our vision through, but it's also going to require the state's approval in terms of what the ultimate configuration of the roadway is.
Other questions?
Yeah.
No, you, you asked your question about whether we would have.
Do I do only one at a time?
Control and he answered it.
Well, okay, but then I asked the follow-on question. Will the chiefs be involved?
Well, our, our plan is to involve the entire community and that's going to include.
I think we've got to all get on the bus and drive it, right?
Question?
No, Diana.
I had a question. Can you talk a little bit about how water will be handled in this?
How water?
Water, yeah, water reclaiming.
Are you talking about stormwater or are you talking about?
And green infrastructure requirements as we, all of that stuff.
Yeah, certainly. So, um, there are a variety of issues with El Camino. As you are mentioning, we don't have drainage facilities along El Camino. There are regional water quality control board requirements when you do replacement of impervious areas. And with the reconfiguration that we're going to be doing, we are actually going to be obligated to install green infrastructure. We're going to need to make sure that what we installed doesn't exacerbate any problems that we currently have. And so our goal would be to try and address those things as we can.
Is that covered in the grant as well?
It is. I'm going to say, again, this, I'm going to say, it's going to be required to implement.
Okay.
And our planning process and our design, I'm going to say our preliminary plans are going to have to show that stuff.
Okay. And are we talking about making a sidewalk and a curb?
That, I was going to say, that is a vision that we need to get through. And so we know that we need pedestrian facilities. What exactly those pedestrian facilities look like are really going to be up for conversation. And so I can suggest that, for example, the area where the roadway gets narrow south of Menlo College, it may make sense to put in a sidewalk approaching Valparaiso. Further north from there, it could be anything from DG pathways to concrete sidewalk or asphalt. That's something that we will work through as we reach out to the community and develop these preliminary designs.
And our money's just for the design phase, correct?
Our money is for the preliminary planning phase and environmental, so it's not carrying through full design.
So wouldn't be about what we just talked about, whether it's materials and all that.
It would be covering what we intend the roadway to look like.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, is this assuming that there will be a reduction in lanes on El Camino Real?
Is it assuming? I, I think that to accommodate our needs, we may need to do that, but that's what the study will find out.
It's a lot of, and so.
And is this something we could approve with the provision that we not reduce any lanes in El Camino Real?
Uh, I don't think that we can preclude that. I think what we're doing is asking for money to do that planning level effort. And what will result will be a report that outlines what that vision of El Camino looks like that we would potentially take to the next level to ask for money to actually do design work.
Last one, when we, when we blocked off and we, that one thing for the walkway, you know, I'm talking about.
Yes.
Did we have a significant traffic issue as a result of that or not?
I don't recall that we did.
I ask one question. There's questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
One at a time.
Go ahead. You can go first. Wants to answer the question. George wants to answer the question.
George?
So, uh, I, I did go in and out of Ashfield to check that road very frequently for signage and, and, um, construction impacts and such. Getting out of Ashfield at certain times of day with that lane closure, because there was more traffic stopped at the signal and backed up, we had to actually put in to keep clear there to allow those folks to get in and out. So it did create an issue. Uh, I don't know that that issue would be replicated if we were to reduce lanes on El Camino because there'd be better platooning of vehicles and things like that. But during the construction there was.
And, uh, so.
So I think, um, just to clarify with, uh, Robert, that this grant of a little over one point four million is for the, um, conceptual design or feasibility of, uh, doing, uh, pedestrian and bicycle connections of the, of our El Camino Real length to, uh, Redwood City and Menlo Park to effectively uh, fulfill the connectivity of, uh, what San Mateo County is trying to do along El Camino. And for that, we would pay a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So two questions, just to clarify the, that this one point four is, you said not for the design, but for the feasibility of that?
I was going to say, it's for the initial planning effort and planning documents for it, including the project study report that has to get submitted to the state for review. And initiating the environmental and kind of covering those things that we need to before we start any sort of design.
Public outreach.
Definitely.
Pro- process of all that. So if there were a lot of residents that came up and said, you know, do not reduce, uh, either lane sizes, you know, to narrow it or, you know, the uh, numbers of lanes, you know, that would all be a part of this study also.
Yeah, I was going to say that integrated in this level of effort has to be public outreach.
Okay.
And so that is something that we know that we need to do. This is not, I'm going to say, this is a roadway that affects everybody in town. And so we understand the need to outreach and connect. And again, this is a grant request. It's an application. We don't know that we would necess- you know, it's.
If we don't do it, the Redwood City.
Uh, when I saw the original design. years and years ago for the Grand Boulevard, and I haven't been on that committee, but they had, in addition to the lanes, one lane was taken up a hundred percent painted red. It was a buses only. So, you know, I think that we should at least put in that our, we don't want to see that because that would make everything go down to one lane.
Wait, what's the question?
I said, are buses going to be designed into this thing? Is that consideration in one of this conceptual?
I I think that our consideration with regards to buses is really making the bus stops accessible. Right now, the bus stops that we have are not pedestrian friendly at all. And so it's really important as we develop the layout of the roadway that we do accommodate transit access. I I don't think that we in our vision, I think in our bicycle pedestrian master plan, we are not designating any bus only facilities.
My question is, is Redwood City and Menlo Park already doing it? So will you be, if you hop on your bike in Redwood City and you're driving along and you get to to our edge of our town, it'll just stop. So if we don't do this, it'll just stop. Their bicycle lane will just stop.
So as as I mentioned, Caltrans is working on a shop project in Redwood City that is pretty much coming to the northern border of town. And so, yes, without extending, it would stop, just like sidewalks currently stop.
Okay.
I have two questions then. First question, right now in Redwood City or or in the county, coming from Redwood City and Atherton, there are three lanes of traffic on each side of the road. Is this, is the current design that you just referred to in response to Diana's question reducing the width of the road to only four lanes?
I have not seen a concept design yet. I saw a document that kind of outlined what they were thinking in terms of what they were planning to include in the project with regards to separated bike bike lanes where they fit. But it, I don't have a layout and once I get one, I'm happy to share it.
So the concept included bike lanes, but you don't know if that would be just bike lanes and maybe narrowing the lanes, but somehow they have to create space with the bike lanes, right?
They'll have to create space, yes. And but again, I don't have the concept layout yet.
Okay, so then my second question is, is this something that we can, we're, since it's our intention to drive the bus that is exerting a lot of influence? And is this something we can approve with the stipulation and in course of driving the bus, we don't want to be advocating to reduce the width, the the number of lanes on El Camino. I don't care about reducing the width, but the number of lanes.
Perhaps, I I think that might constrict the project too much. Maybe it's a different direction would be to ensure that we evaluate all the possible alternatives with a priority on maintaining as many lanes of travel as possible while still meeting the bicycle and pedestrian goals.
And holding our back, holding back our right to to veto the whole project when we see what they come up with.
Well, at the end of the day, if there's a project at the end of this, and Caltrans decides they want to do it, Caltrans is the one who's probably gonna be footing that bill.
So does that say Atherton doesn't have a say on what they do?
At the end of the day, we probably have input, but it's a state highway.
Okay, but if we're driving the buses more than just sort of.
They're 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 a big passenger.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, to George. So if if we decide not to go in in this because we we feel that we're not going to have any say, will Caltrans put the bills to finish it all up?
Don't know. It 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 may happen. It may not happen. It may happen without our input at all. But until then, Redwood City and Menlo Park will end up with their dead ended bike lanes and sidewalks.
Well, we're not exactly sure what that we're gonna end up with. It hasn't been.
They're moving in that direction, but what they end up with, we don't know.
Okay, let me see if there's any public comment. Yep, right now there's a public comment to Greg. Say it again? Oh, okay, great.
I guess I've been listening more intently lately because of my campaign, but I think there's a possibility that there's going to be a strong reaction against any possibility of narrowing the lanes on the, and I think that you need to worry about getting four hundred letters instead of two hundred. So I think you just, I don't know what the answer is because I don't know the the details of what they're proposing, but the inference is and the concern is in the community that you are going to narrow the lanes and the traffic's gonna run through the neighborhoods. And then people in the neighborhoods are not going to be happy because of that. So I I don't have the answer because I'm not close enough to what he proposed. And but I just know the feedback from my, I heard from a few people said that you should be very careful about what you approve unless you're pretty comfortable that you're not going to get a landslide of letters again, if that's possible.
Okay, thank you. Stacy?
There we go. So from my perspective, I think this is a no brainer, that we should be going forward with this grant application. It sounds like the best way for us to either drive the bus or have feedback is to be at the table. And to be at the table, we should be submitting the grant application and going through this process. As part of my campaign, I've been talking to a lot of people and the universal consensus is that El Camino is extremely dangerous. People who live on, you know, the opposite, opposite side of El Camino from their kids' schools can't let their kids walk or ride their bikes to school because it's not safe. And because we have no infrastructure in our town, we have no commercial, we have no grocery stores, people are having to commute to Menlo Park and Redwood City, and we should be helping people do that outside of their cars if they want to. And right now, it's not, I I have an e-bike. I try and ride my bike to run my errands and it's not, I avoid El Camino because it's not safe, even though that's the fastest route to get to all these places. So I think this is a no brainer and we should be doing it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment? I don't see any other public comment. I'll bring it back to the council for comments from the council.
I kind of agree with most of what Stacy said. We obviously aren't really going to be driving the bus, but our best chance to get in input is is to get this grant. And it's a relatively small cost to the town to get to to pursue it. I don't have a a strong opinion. I'm not knowledgeable enough to know whether narrowing a lane or eliminating a lane is going to be Armageddon. But the more research and work that's done, that we have a chance to influence, the better the outcome will be.
I'll I'll make a comment. Last night I was at a public forum at Menlo College. And one of the issues that came up at Menlo College was concern for the lack of safety on El Camino Real along the college and the desire for sidewalks along the college and along Carton Field. And there are sidewalks on the east side of the street, but there aren't on the west side of the street. And anyone who tries to walk that area, this would be from essentially Alejandra or or really from Valparaiso to Isabella knows that it's just not safe. It's not safe to be on the side of the street. It's a state highway and cars go fast. I mean, in response to that comment and that issue that was raised, I I informed the student that we'd never, or I'd never heard a request for there to be sidewalks put along that street where Menlo College and Carton Field are. But I thought it was a reasonable request because it would make it safer. And I agree with both what Bob and Stacy said. I think we need to be at the table. I I think we should do this, but I feel really strongly that we should not be agreeing to eliminate a lane on El Camino Real. Everyone from Atherton has to go to Menlo Park or to Redwood City in order to buy groceries or do whatever they need to do because we don't have any commercial businesses. Now, it's true, what Stacy said is right. That making it unsafe means that you're forced to go in a car. You can't really go on a bike or a scooter. And that's a fair comment. So I think it's appropriate thing to look at. But I would like us, given that we're hoping to drive the bus here, I would hope that Atherton would exert influence to try to do everything we can do not to eliminate lanes of traffic on El Camino Real because I I think the perception in Atherton is that 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 will be strongly opposed. I do believe that because I think that people are worried that it'll create more congestion and drive traffic off of El Camino into the neighborhoods, which is the last thing we want.
Yeah, so you know, I've got approval, yes, I've decided before we came to the meeting that I would approve the design, not willing to commit to the implementation. And I I think we should strongly make sure that, you know, the fire districts are involved as long as the police chief. But secondly, the narrowing of the lanes idea is is a super idea. And I think keeping the lanes of traffic the same while still providing safety, a safety corridor on, and it doesn't have to be on two sides. It could just be on one side. You could have all the bike lanes on one side and the walking path on one side. They don't have to be on both lanes of the road. They can cross over in a hawk beacon or something like that. So I think we need to exert our influence on on what we think is going to be acceptable here. Because they're gonna eventually come out and say, okay, we want you to participate in the construction, which will not be small.
Further comments? I think this is an action item.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution supporting the El Camino Real Complete Streets Gap Closure Project and submit a grant application to the San Mateo County Transportation Authority for project planning funds.
One second. And can we amend it to do, or is it direction?
It is providing direction. We we take the input from the council this evening, which was basically, you know, make sure the drainage is in there, do what we can to make sure that we evaluate all the alternatives so that we're not reducing the lanes of travel along El Camino to the maximum of which then possible, while still respecting what we need to do for the goals for bicycle and pedestrian. Make sure we involve the community and outreach and making sure that involves the fire district.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's that's it. I've already taken public comments, except at the end, there are always public comments. So any public comment or any council will.